All right. All the meetings, the December meeting, the Zionville redevelopment commission to order. And we'll recognize any attendees who request to be noted. And Zach, will they show up online here? Oh, there's somebody. Doesn't look like anyone's requesting to be noted tonight. That we can tell. Okay, so we'll move on to our remarks. The director report, Cory, if you're ready.
Cory. Cory Sharpe, Director, 19, is looking at what we have been doing over the past year. And we started the year with kind of three months of education and working through all of the different avenues that we have the opportunity to work on. And then we kind of got down to business. So in Creekside, we are the landholders for any unsold properties. So this last year, we negotiated a sale to Kendall Property Group for lot nine that, as we know, last month kind of dissolved because they found another property on Bennett Parkway that was basically moving in ready, watching for them. We sold lots 10 and 11 to Grand Wright Hall Performance. And we will also have to buy them because the steel is going up. It is moving very fast and really excited about what is up to occur there. I was reading a book on the history of Zionville. And it was really neat to understand the history and the love for automobiles in Zionville over the course of time. So having these things here is just to what Zionville's culture is. We have a pending sale of us three, four, and five. Brian Crick and I and Fredo Partners are working on a development agreement that is structured around the LOI that you approved. I expect that to come before you in the new year and finalize that development agreement, that the developers are working on their due diligence as well. Then through the course of the year, we had interest on lots one, seven, and eight. And those interests may unfold into the new year depending on the market, the office market, and then construction and lending prices climbing. So depending on how those shape forward, we may see some infrastructure for those three properties. Lot nine, of course, is on the market. And we have had a couple owners that have interest in that. And so we will continue to set out in Q1 this next year. So the town hall property in front of us, we issued an RFI and received three proposals that showed graphics. We actually received four proposals. The fourth proposal was basically a narrative explaining how important it is for this area to be designed contextually sensitive to the area. We look forward, we are working with the CDC group, which is the for that
Thank you.
This property, what is its layout? They, CDC currently owns this building. So they are currently working on a parking layout to understand what do they need specifically for their development rather than this huge, big campus master planning? Because some of this property is not owned by the RDC. But I really appreciated that they thought outside of the box and bringing something forward. This about, this project showed a similar concept where again, you're mirroring the existing building across the street, the office, and then town homes along the trail. And then we had a proposal from a town home developer on a city east. And so it was great to be introduced to them and understand their interest in Zionville as we put it forward, to understand, you know, will products like that fit along the trail or anywhere else that we may be facilitating development. Financially, we made a couple specific changes. One, we dissolved the micro loan program. We approved a TIP for the farm and had three bond disbursements. Appaloosa Crossing at 146 at Michigan had one bond disbursement. Then Crow issued a five-year projection for TIP revenue, also outlining what our debt service is in over that five years. That was done in April, and it was done in alignment with our DLGF recording going forward. And you'll see that in the submissions that you received from municipal advisors, that financial advisors, we want that to continue to always be five years looking ahead. Because as we start to look at projects in the South Village and other areas, these projects take a long time. And, you know, we need to be looking at our finances also that far out. We had Crow do a year-end report in November along the same lines. We improved our budget in October. And then we helped the mayor facilitate the implementation of the $1.9 million ready grant. Speaking of projects take a long time, I've been in this position for a year and a quarter now and have really appreciated the work that the mayor allowed us to do to continue to move development forward. Because a lot of the work that we have done is facilitating conversations and getting people interested in the South Village, getting people interested in Creekside, and educating the population on what the RDC does. So the RDC specifically has made some policy changes as a result of us looking into our practices and aligning those with state statute. When creating our TIP funds from the town accounts, and Cindy is going to talk about that a little bit. We will have a practice every January of swearing in our officers. And then, of course, making sure that our officers are opposite appointment individuals for president and vice president. Then we have three appointments to the Community Development Corporation Board. We appointed in April Kara Weber and Erica Carpenter. So in April, we will also say our year-long appointments. This upcoming April, we will make appointments again. And then in September, we appointed Brian Jones. Kara Weber is currently serving as the president and Erica Carpenter is the secretary. Then consultant contracts. You approved my contract, innovative planning in February along with Ice Millers. And then financial advisor, we never lost anything with the contract with Crow. But Crow has a contract with the administration. And so they continue to walk alongside us and help us produce the reports and be available as we receive Wild Air projects to do those projections. And then finally, we did a lot of communication and education. We did three RDC 101 presentations. We did one at the beginning of the year here. We did one last week here. And then we also did one at the Village Residents Association. And I continue to go back to the Village Residents Association to listen to them, gain their understanding of what's important to them as development plans come underway for the South Village. Along the same lines, I've been meeting with property owners in that area. And that means the developers that actually own those properties along with property owners like the Derrick Wade owner or Kent. We can't tell the time. So, and then also made a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce Admins Secret Committee. And we, across the, across the year, we had crossed the department. Coordinating everything that we do impacts the rest of the town. And it impacts DPW from infrastructure standpoint, planning from land use standpoint, and then lease and fire. And so as we move forward, we're going to be a little bit more structured around reaching out to each one of these groups. And in January, I'll lay out an entire year's work calendars, who, who we're meeting when, so that it's just available for anyone that wants to attend. And then in addition, I, next year, I would like to beef up what's available on our website as well. So those conversations started this year. And it's just all part of being available and getting the information out and educating people on what is the capacity and availability for the RDC to walk alongside development while still maintaining the culture and aesthetic character of Zionville. So that was our work over the past year. Do you have any other questions specifically on what we did or what we're going to do?
We go back to the last slide. As your separate tip accounts, when we approved the budget for '24, there were some things that are not going to happen that will change the final reconciliation. I think it would be helpful if we prepare for January a final reconciliation, how to pay the budget based on what the trajectory to be and what may already be on a basis. And then, can you answer, maybe off the top of your head, do you know, those CDC board appointments? Those are one-year appointments. Were we filling vacancies? Is it a calendar year? Do they rotate or stagger appointments?
It is a, well, maybe perhaps all of them.
Yeah, they're one-year appointments. Kara had previously been serving on the CDC. Erica Carpenter did fill a vacancy. And Brian Jones, we did need to extend it out. And so that he also filled a vacancy as well.
The other, the other appointments beyond the three that we have responsibility for, they're on account, they're during a calendar year term. If, if others agree, I mean, in January and just a point, even if there's a reappointment of these individuals, to do, to align those with calendar years that everybody's coming in and potentially we're not at the same time, just a recommendation.
But the other appointees to the CDC are mayor appointees.
And there are four.
All right, so, thanks Cory. Are we on to item B for the new bank account overview? Is that where Cindy's going to come up for us?
Before we go, insufficient treasurer. Earlier in the year, Cory and I spoke about the new account, banking account for the RDC accounts. And so that account has been opened currently. It is at P and C. That is where the other accounts are. I will say that in 2024, we're in for land services and the RDC account will kind of be lumped in there as far as making sure that we have best product for RDC as well. The account is open and the transfer funds will actually take place first year. Because right now, we're in the middle of bond payments and waiting on false settlement, et cetera. So the account's ready, but the, the funds will be moved over by the first year. There, I know there was talk about multiple times being open for allocation area. That's just, really, it's not feasible, just for the fact that half the allocation areas are zero balance. These zero balance accounts, and they only see activity twice a year for a payment. So all of the RDC funds will be in one bank account. The segregation comes within the financial system. And each allocation area is assigned a fund, which is their part funding, and reflects all of the expenses and revenues that have been for that fund. So that's where we get the individual reporting from is within the system. The account that, that we opened up will earn interest. I did, I had to do a couple of calculations. And with the way the interest rates are now, actually, having a sweep account, even though we're paying a sweep fee, the interest rate was high enough that it was just quite a bit of a difference of earning the interest over just a regular interest-bearing account. So I did go with sweep account. If interest rates start changing, it's just a matter of time to change that. So that's something.
You have a question?
Yes.
When, when you set up the new account, did you ask about needing really closure fees? Should we go with a different bank with our?
There's no need for anything like that as far as who would that, Matt, if you guys have any questions?
What's the interest rate?
Five percent.
And what is the monthly fee?
Four hundred. The interest variance is two percent.
You know, Cindy, if interest is restricted, does that have to be reinvested in the TIP? Where, like, do we have to disaggregate that and allocate interest earned on dollars? That has to be reinvested in the TIP area from the funds that came from that? Or is that how much should do?
Like that, when we, when we split it out between things, we just, we figure out the average amount if we use that percentage to do relative stuff in that.
So Cindy, in the past, the RDC's budgeting for, when you see, you know, monthly balance sheets and things like that, we now and the future are going to be kind of separate a little bit from the town. Am I correct in saying that?
It'll still look the same, just for the fact that we're in the same financial system. So your reports will still, you'll all be seeing the funds that, you know, that represent money for the RDC and the breakdowns of the allocation areas in those, their specific funds.
I guess what my question is, in the past, there's been some difficulty across the board of getting the, when we look into separating, so to speak, will it be a little bit easier for us to get monthly reports on, you know, what we're, what the, what's coming in and going out and that type of thing?
The difficulty is, you know, because the issues you have with interest.
I'm not pointing fingers, I just
No, I understand.
I'm just curious.
Right, and so, going forward, I will say we've got everything updated and everything on. And so going forward, we should go for these monthly reports for you and what she is.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, look what's science. Cindy, I thought the town was moving their accounts to anything? With all the issues that we've been dealt with, financials as well, making the move just was not possible at the time. And since we're just now kind of coming out and really achieving, we are, we're really kind of outdated. And so we're just, we're going to have to do what the part of the, what does the town intend to do and who are fears. Hopefully, the numbers.
Thanks. All right, and so the next item on the agenda is the TIP area report, which is part of your packet. New activity is highlighted in yellow. There's any questions? No questions, I think we can move on. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have the approval and adoption of our last meeting minutes, November 27.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second, all in favor? And then we have our claims that are needing approved for December. I think those are beyond the minutes in the packet. It's like a single page. Make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Make that motion passes as well. You need to sign the form. And then that brings us to item C on the new business agenda for the 2024 financial services proposal. Cory, you're going to talk about that?
So we received proposals for financial advisor services for 2024 from three departments. And before I walk through the proposals, I want to make sure that there's no confusion between what our treasurer does and what the financial advisor does. So Cindy, for my state statute is the RDC's treasurer. And because she serves as the four units, she's the full unit manager for the town. So that connection, whoever is in the CDC will ultimately become our treasurer. She helps us manage our bank account funds when the county sends us TIP receipts. She's the one that directs the project for the management of the village. She's the one that helps us manage the financial procedure and then the we have the need for a financial advisor that helps us look outward as well and helps us do the reporting necessary for CLGF at the state level. And so we received proposals to basically assist us with the five-year TIP report, assist us for reports due to the state in April and then at the end of the year. Cindy and I advise Cindy and I as we're in the spring, let's make sure that we're and then also as projects come along to do, be our go-to for financial projections over a, so a lot of, I'm going to use Wild Air as an example. So Wild Air is a project that came to the RDC and is requesting a TIP for the project. Our due diligence to answer their question or request is to understand how much TIP can be produced and for how long, and how much does the developer need? All of those questions are in our responsibility to answer before it goes out to council for the economic development commission and land commission. Because we need to be able to say, this bond could generate $12 million. And there's, you know, $10 million worth of projects for its 25 years versus a 10-year bond. So these experts are the ones that do that work and they walk, walk and step with us. So the first proposal that we received is from Crow, who has been working with the town and, and the RDC. The second proposal is from Baker Tilly. And then the third proposal is from Brady Financial. All three firms are local firms. And of course, the P proposals are in the back of their packets, you know? It's never in the front. And it demonstrates the chase of like, who's offering what. What I told each of the firms is that we will accept the proposals at this meeting. And then you, as a new manager, can decide how you want to move forward, whether you want to pull up or not, or whether you wanted to go through a certain process. That is up for your discussion. And so, Madam President, I'll try to let you guide how we go over there.
Yeah, did, do we have representation that they were expecting to talk at all tonight? Or from these groups? No?
I mean, there, we took, you know, everybody's here. So if you have questions, you know, that's something that they were
Not prepared. No, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
And I let them know that, you know, we're going to basically accept and all of them, Crow, all of them, Crow asked to be interviewed because of course, we know Crow. We don't need to interview that to create a relationship. But Baker Tilly and Brady Financial asked for an interview. And so that is why I'm opening it up to you to see.
Okay, yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Cory, do you recall, at least my state for financial services, like the advisors?
And if we have the two that have requested, requested an interview, would Crow also like the opportunity as well?
That was an official note, those.
Professionals are the ones who need to be on those three real-time hours.
Given that we've had, we have submitted those who submitted proposals express interest in interviewing, I think that would be appropriate for us to make a committee of commissioners to take some time to meet with those individuals and ask questions and work through the proposals and make a formal preparation.
Reasonable, do we need to make a motion? Reasonable. Do we need to make a motion as such officially? To form, do we need to make a motion to form the subcommittee to review the proposals? No, okay. All right, yeah, no, that makes sense. Would we? Do we want to get volunteers from the board as to who would like to do it? We need two, right?
Do we consider tailoring it to the new commission? My recommendation would be to allow. Put on all great old business for the next agenda to establish a subcommittee. I agree, probably two rather than three, so we don't have.
Sounds good. Thank you, everyone, for submitting the proposals. Thanks for the introduction, Corey. And then the final item on our new business, the economic development area. Resolution for Wild Air. We have a rather substantial part of the back of our packet that pertains to this.
Just been going through the town's commissions this entire year. And so I think. Going to allow it to be a little presentation of what is Wild Air, who is Old Town Development. And then we can walk through what, what they're requesting and then moving forward.
We've got the opportunity to talk earlier this fall and give a kind of a section of the review, but just wanted to have the opportunity for public record to share a little more. I mean, just, just give you a overview of the project. It's that the, really, northern intersection of Oak Street and Marysville Road. It's a fragment about half way between Village and 65. It's a new community, primarily residential. Focus on like making initiatives that are. Any locations was, maybe it was concerning our gut sense of where people want to live. And it's really become a metric for us and how we look at opportunities for creating new communities. Titleless design is specific to actual intent of the planning and the time that we go through. Visioning new. This particular property has been owned by the Johnsons family for several generations. Now, the matriarch, Elizabeth Johnson, the research we've done and getting into the family was, was very involved in establishing an equestrian culture community. Johnsons did a RFP in the spring of '22, looking for a master plan developer for the community. They promoted some pretty high ideals that they wanted to see here. And as we got to know the families, we figured out it was really an authentic passion for them that they wanted to see something special in the community. Because of the underlying serenity of the property, it really could have been developed as, you know, homogenous suburban subdivision. I could have been probably 10th entity, but they were only through by council in June of this year. But it would have lacked any sort of unique character instead of Johnsons. Or somebody willing to do the hard work of, you know, listening to stakeholder feedback in the community and then partnering with the town on coming up with a master plan that meets multiple demographic needs as far as product type in here, I might say products, different types. But also trying to understand what some of the broader community goals are. In our listing exercises, one of the first things we heard was the desire for land to be set aside for future civic use for the community. I've said this multiple times in different public setting. It's not really our place to define what that means to the community. We've heard ideas around the concept of a community center, that can be really broad. The community from, you know, the event center, park venue to YMCA tech facility. But we heard that that is a need that has been raised multiple times by citizens of the community. And so we, we wanted to include that out there. And one of the Johnsons family, the suburb's signature green space, there's really high quality. That was else that they said, this is a prerequisite for us, whoever receives this process must deserve this. As a part that we could contribute to the town title. And so there's some, there's some really, you know, missional aspects to the land planning that were identified early and we helped started incorporating that into our planning exercise. The other aspect they're playing for us is, I mean, certainly understanding what residential product types would be in either band. So we can have logical absorption rates throughout our business. But we also pair that with understanding context sensitivity, what are surrounding land uses? How do we transition density from our neighbors, from the edges of the property into our site? So there was in '22, a whole series of community conversations. We did an open source design show, basically, as we say, in a public workshop to master plan the community. Invited town officials, but appointed, elected, and employees of the town invited neighbors to hear the information. And I think, you know, I usually typically measure, you know, success in our listing exercise based on the, you know, remonstration that is experienced when we, you know. So we did about six months of work in the public realm before we actually filed anything. And I, this is a source of pride for me and the effort that our team committed to this. We had, you know, the most positive in the days there, in the days there, it's a nice type of path. And so we felt like that was a smooth process working with the town staff to bring this plan forward. So that's kind of some backstory on how we got involved and what we're looking for. But just kind of an overview of different product types. I just got a, I think we have a screen in front of you here, but maybe a deck in front of you as well. But Marysville Road really devised the site into 260 acres. We had some requirements based on drainage in our master plan. We mentioned adjacency and neighbors, context sensitivity and transition. The woods were a major piece of our planning and how that ties the two sides already together. But one of the early things that we heard from the town engineering planning staff was traffic was going to be a big experience. And this leads to a conversation around our tip request. Marysville, high-volume road as far as, you know, current traffic counts, but also what's planned in the future. We threw there are traffic studies early. And we, it was determined that we would need some sort of traffic control mechanism to safely get traffic in and out of our community. This could have been developed as two unique projects, one on each side of Marysville Road. They didn't have to be developed together, but really brought for one master plan community. And there's kind of an, you know, opportunity here and a constraint for us. Building a roundabout infrastructure is phenomenal. It is a public works project that, like in looking at, we have no idea how to make that so right. I've never built a roundabout, you know, of the scale we're talking about in two as part of redevelopment effort. But it helps traffic flow. And so it creates this opportunity here with the commercial components of the project to potentially capture some, some tip increment to build some of these, these public benefit improvements. So it's not only for the benefit of our community, but it's really, you know, all the adjacent proprietors and communities that would be impacted by ingress egress issues and be caused by having hundreds of new homes. And the reality is, if it had been developed with underlying zoning, there wouldn't have been this opportunity to look at how we could capture increment to, to create this benefit. And the rezone process creates this opportunity for the town to compel the developer to have to do things. And the roundabout became part of the discussion, it was a requirement. We raised our hand early, we had started these conversations that we are willing to, something in public domain. We need to acknowledge now that it will result in us having some sort of, you know, reasonable request for tip because of the very significant cost of that infrastructure. So looking at this image here, on the west side of Marysville Road, so if you're looking at the screen, would be the left side of the screen, different shades of tan and yellow and orange. Those are all single-family home types. And the units that are closer to Marysville Road, real load garages on alleys. And larger lot sizes though, that we typically see in the village or what we would have done at Carmel, which you see a little bit of play, they're, they're larger real load lots. The yellow lots or the cream are, I'm gonna use an example from maybe Holiday Farm. Those would be similar to what Old Town and other coastal areas on market built large custom homes on lots where you can do side load garages. That's the more high-end price point. So everything that's left or west of Marysville Road would be probably minimum eight, $50, $900 price point up to $2.50. So that's, that's the price you're considering. That will be absolutely do multiple builders, different custom builders in the market would be in that side of the community. The east side of Marysville Road, so right on the screen, we're coming back up here, is where we have more of a traditional neighborhood design called TND. And that would be real load garages on alleys, would definitely be the norm there. Makes of small cottage lots for townhomes, single-family homes. That's targeted at David Weekley Homes and Old Town. We, we call that a semi-custom price point. It's still luxury housing. Price per townhome in the fives up to 900 range, but probably the target, the average target there would be five and seven. Top right of the screen, kind of a tan color, those are a ranch product that would also be done by David Weekley. And tucked between the yellow lots at the top right, there's a little node there I call gray. That's 20 single-family pads that will be donated to ILLAD for adults with intellectual development disabilities. As an initiative that we, Old Town has created, any, any of the larger scale communities that we're developing, we got an opportunity to serve urban land neighbors with, with attainable housing. We're trying to find a community partner to move that initiative forward. So really excited to work with ILLAD organizations. Hands here, wanted to highlight kind of the, make it back and make sure I glossed over this. I'll talk more specifically about the, the commercial use types, but covered the residential. And then really along immediately to the east side, the right side of the screen, along Marysville, there's some red roofs in there and that's the multifamily component. And then working our way south in A would be a senior living facility. And then at the core of Marysville, Coke is a civic use site. So that covers kind of the entirety of the developed master plan. And I just kind of want to talk specific areas. The Johnson preserve in our agreement is that the Johnsons would have difficulty to give that to the town. We, we have communicated with Parks Department that the goal would be to do similar, similar to how we played the overall project. We did a design shred to match the plan, the overall project. We, we talked the first part about doing a design shred specific for this piece here, where we can work together to plan that. We see it, you know, minimally invasive there as far as impact on boards, ideally trails. And then to make a public benefit beyond just the residents, we've been asked to include some of the little parking area, potentially public bathrooms. We would, we haven't worked with retailers, we try to develop and purchase Parks Department, but that, that is already memorialized as a PD requirement that this exists. And our next step is to plan that with Parks. The multifamily component project, our zoning allows for 300 multifamily units in 20 pounds per feet of commercial slash retail space. We do not see retail district, but we would like to incorporate some, some neighborhood retail. It creates, you know, opportunity for community connection. I would love to have anybody visit our redevelopment, our home, our first attainable housing project. Created attainable housing units for people with disabilities into a market rate development project. But our leasing office is a coffee shop in Baker's. It's a way to bring that community, the broader community in and build connection. And so it's a great amenity for our residents, but we really believe that it fosters a greater sense of community. So not taking, you know, large-scale, you know, retail district, but it's really boutique uses, service type uses for the community. There would be the possibility and the zoning of duty would allow for a office type use of boutique offices or, or residences as well. So we have already, we submitted our project Monday night for the first residential phases. We'll be filing yet this week for the multifamily phase for, for that flat and architectural approval. And so this will be moving pretty rapidly. This also includes a community clubhouse that serves not only the multifamily, but also the broader community. So we have totals just shy of 400 total wholesale residential units plus up to 300 multifamily units. So a pretty substantial club facility that would serve up to 700 residential units. I think we would see the multifamily all as part of phase one. So high-level overview there, but we'll be throwing in architectural work for approval. But, you know, we're modeling the character images. This is, we would consider, you know, class A architecture. I mean, I'm biased, proud of the, the things that we work on, but I really believe it will be the nicest product in open market today. The senior living is more of a point, but as we started looking at graphics, the community in, in almost every community in North Suburbs of Minneapolis, seniors make up a substantial portion of, of our resident population. And so we, and we've got master planning communities happening, it's an opportunity for senior learning into this, you know, master plan. It creates opportunities for families who live close to loved ones of different age ranges. So it's, we thought this would be a much needed product type. The zoning approval is pretty broad, but it is specific to senior. We're looking at, you know, the typical model of independent living, assisted living, memory care. We're, we're talking to a few different partners on that. We don't, as Old Town, we construct a lot of different product types, but we would definitely find a party, a partner that, that plays in that space to be our partner on it. But there's, there's a lot of interest, I'll, I'll express that, that we have the opportunity here because of quality of development. There are some really strong candidates that we'd like to be part of the project. So we're betting opportunities here, but we would see that as a next phase. So whereas we'll have a few similar family phases come online, I think 174 lots are part of the phase plus the multifamily. And then a few years down the road, probably two would be next phase, where we would see the senior coming online. Then we have the civic use site. We've talked about different strategies, ways to. activate that transaction municipality for them to acquire that for a future public benefit project. But that's really up to the future administration of the town to figure out. But we would love to see, you know, something that activates the community further beyond our bulk, it's something that brings, you know, the outside in. We think it creates a great place to make an initiative for us. The timing of this, and I clearly understand that, just based on comments I heard earlier tonight, that there's a transition moment for most of the rural communities. Our challenges are real problems, but we are very much focused on getting the road infrastructure built this summer of twenty four. We have heard clear marching orders from community leadership that Marysville Road will not be closed down. They may not want to have a brand new road. That'd be for a period of time, but they'd also really like us, from what we've heard, to have it built and expedited during the summer when the school wouldn't be as impacted. And so we're kind of creating the deal here with trying to get started overall project. But our request, should it be approved, would be to use our phase one tax increment generated from the multifamily's project to fund the public works projects of road infrastructure. So we're really wanting to move rapidly as as this body of town was feasible. But in the spirit of our commitment, that's at our request. If we would have the ability to do those resources to build a road project potentially as early as summer.
Jeremy Allmeyer, our bond counsel, here to answer questions. Yeah, Jeremy Allmeyer, Parks Department. I think there was prepared a declaratory resolution. You guys know this. Well, on the redevelopment mission, that's the first step, right? In setting up these areas, obligate the future redevelopment commission, whether that's you or others to anything, this is a round trip. Well, we know it's time to transition, but if there is appetite to get this process at least started, I don't think to argue anyone anything because final approval will not happen until it's made its way to the official.
Thank you. I think, does the board have some questions?
I'm just curious, in the entire project as a whole, would you say, commercial versus, you know, the other part of that, how much would be commercial as far as the tax, tax? And that may not be a very good question, but.
No, I, I, I think it's relevant because, you know, one of the early steps we go through is having conversations with the schools to understand, you know, their perspective, impacts on tax revenue. We're, based on the price point of the residential, we're looking at an overall average, you know, price point in the community of eight hundred thousand dollars is a minimum average times approximately four hundred residential units. So about three hundred twenty million dollars of assessed value, potential print market value and assessed value we know are for two different things. But but that's the scope of the the for sale components. On the commercial side, Crow's already put some numbers I would assume have been shared with you. But the senior facility and the multifamily will have market values, that's why they're different. But assessed value of probably ninety to one hundred twenty million dollar range overall. So I'm considering the commercial, and to clarify the answer, by commercial, did you mean the commercial assessed value or specifically like what we think of as retail office, that sort of?
No, what I put a question goes to whatever would be, you know, for profit and get taxed at the three percent rate.
I won't speak to rate because, you know, the multifamily and the senior may not be at the commercial three percent rate.
Correct.
Yeah, but the the retail could be, it's only twenty thousand square foot. And I would guess it's going to have assessed value, probably construction cost of three hundred dollars per foot, probably assessed at a hundred fifty. So we're talking less than five million dollars, three percent range. It's de minimis. It's it's really the bulk of the AP is generated by the multifamily and the senior. Again, approximately a hundred million dollars of what would be in total being a hundred fifty dollars. About quarter of the year.
And I'm sorry, go ahead, man. As far as the breakdown on the tip itself, you guys have requested a hundred percent. Is that, is that correct? And is that a, is that a make or break hundred percent?
I can look in high and say absolutely is. I have been involved in multiple redevelopment areas, professional relationships, partnerships. This is a unique one in that we have been asked for some things upfront about preserve land for, you know, contribution to a civic site and build millions of dollars worth of road infrastructure. Our performance is extremely thin on the development and I actually, and I don't know how to do it but for the use of tip to build this.
Do you have a project list itemization? Will you have that?
We can provide that very rapidly. And you provided, you'll see that the list of public infrastructure items is longer retired dollar value than that.
And in the civic use space, has there been any due diligence done to determine whether it is buildable?
As far as the quality of the dirt?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did the whole site. We did all the engineering, environmental, phase one soils. And so soils and hydrology and drainage was a big topic with the plan fusion suite. And, you know, we, we put an enormous amount of effort into that because it really defines the function of the site, how you manage water. So we do those things really early in the process because it can really dictate, you know, the amount of buildable ground that you have to play with. And so on my side, the kind of smoking gun, so it should kind of show how much research our team did upfront. If you look at the conceptual imagery that we shared last fall at our design charrette and then the final platte was submitted, same exact, just a few lot lines got spent. But we did the work upfront to know how the site functioned. So it'd be really last fall, maybe on bill. If we spent the town with flowers. So all that research was done for the entire site. We didn't distinguish between, oh, that's not ours in the future repair, you know, somebody else's problem. We had, we traded the whole thing upfront because we didn't know where the proposed Civic U site would would end up. We just heard that there was a request for us to preserve land for that. And part of our shred process is where is it most appropriate to place that? And it wasn't really clear. There were some town staff members that said, ah, we, we might like to see this anchored in the middle of the site. And we came up with all four reasons why that might not be logical. One of them would be, we don't, as a developer, want to live with the ambiguity, what's going to happen on this ten acres for the next five years? You know, in the middle of our site, that would be a sales attraction for people not knowing what's going to happen. The other thing is that the Civic U's would not be to serve primarily the residents while they are being a broader community. And so having the visibility of a major intersection would be more important. And so we, we really came later and said, well, that's where we think the site was and reached an agreement with our, our planning team here with the town staff.
And then with the Civic U space, does that include the drainage? So is the drainage part of the full scope?
Now, Sharon, look at this image. There's six or seven pond structures, pre master plan, all drainage for all phases upfront, including sewer main extensions and water main extension. We, we felt like it was necessary to plan all of it because, and it's also a strategy. When we heard what the request was from the town for sort of a Civic U site, we talked about acres and it means to shoot for as much as possible acres, you said, in twenty acres aside. And we, so what, what are some targeted project types that you'd look at? Days around Central Indiana as prototypes of, you know, a potential project, not saying that's what the town wants, but, you know, what are other civic projects? A lot of, a lot of sites had, you know, a third of them taken up by drainage projects. And so we said, you know, land's valued with us for our development. How do we match the plan? We do have a Civic U site, totally buildable acreage and have incorporated stormwater into the entire site. So we took the volumes of this approximately ten, eleven acre site, Civic U site and and put that into our overall stormwater system.
Thank you. Did the traffic study that you did incorporate, did it say that it needed one or two stoplights in it? I'm assuming it said stoplights, but you're looking in round, you're looking at roundabouts, right?
Absolutely. It was never suggested by the town that stoplight would be acceptable. So it's, that's never occurred to us. It was always roundabouts. And so that's the only thing we studied. But, you know, we, we hired a consultant who does the road grade approved, familiar with that, how they grade. The goal is to show that we're not making things worse and that making improvement. But that was, certainly if we added seven hundred residential units and just had right in, left out type conditions with with two intersections in Marysville, it would have created a lot of challenges. It would have diminished the road rate. So it was really a necessity.
Yeah. You mentioned the town desired. Was that part of the study that you performed, getting the input from the citizens or is it from administration?
Desireed might be, to clarify that, really, we were instructed, we're going to remember here in like our system, but we were instructed that we had to do something to, to allow traffic to flow more easily. It, it really doesn't work well to have that left turnout on Marysville. So I'm going to make sure I answer your question accurately, but our, if we did a traffic study, or we did the truck study, if we said, we don't do anything, no roundabouts added, no stop or stop light, that would study. It would have lowered the road rate. It would have been a worse condition. And so that's typically not acceptable when you're seeking a rezoning. So it was, these would be the acceptable mechanisms to improve that. So typically in community planning, engineering planning, you don't go from roundabout condition to stoplight. That creates chaos. So I don't think anybody ever contemplated stoplights since there's already been a roundabout at Oak and Marysville. So it would create a bottleneck to do a stoplights. We only ever talked about, you have to do something at these manager points and a roundabout.
Mr. Roth, I want to look at the parcel map that you shared. And I'm trying to kind of lay it. So with the two allocation areas that are subject to the tip request, are those zone commercial, would that be commercial at the commercial class, all of that, the multifamily and the other commercial use, is that all for both, for both allocation areas?
So the multifamily and the senior living product based on the current pitch would fall by that as commercial under the tips statute, just property taxes. I'm not certain whether all the commercials inside that parcel area, I presume it is.
So looking at your full scope of the project, the rest of the areas that fall outside of the two allocation areas would be single family residential properties. And so then they're not, we're not set, would not be setting up base and calculating an increment. Those properties would all be developed and would pay property tax. So the impact of the schools, yes, there would be an impact because the multifamily, you know, that increment will be designated to pay the bonds for the infrastructure projects. But all of the development around that is not going to be designated for public infrastructure. In the declaratory resolution, there's exhibit C and it talks about support bonds. If, as things come online, the increment is larger than what is projected to serve as to that that you are testing for approval to be able to issue subordinate bonds to do projects within the the EDA or the allocation areas. I'm not clear, what are you contemplating?
I think the notion there is that if the assessed value projections are are lower than than what actually happens, then there's additional increments. And so that's supportive bond would would be a way to only, it would only have to be paid to the extent there was that addition. As Justin mentioned, the public infrastructure exceeds, I think, the amount that the, that the, the base, what I'll call the base case would generate if proceeds are filed, proceeds. So that'd be a way for them to increase some of that incremental infrastructure cost that they bore if there's assessed value warrants it. If the assessed value comes in, you know, we know, we know it will not come in our projection. Hopefully it's close, right? So, but if it comes in above, then that's supportive bond. It's just a method to provide an instrument that fixes it if you pay, if it ever gets paid.
How often, when you have a tip request with those hundred percent pledges?
Related to maybe structured parking. Some sort of key infrastructure improvement, I think, one years ago, that was a very minor split, actually, well than a hundred percent because we were building some stormwater infrastructure that served a broader regional detention area, but we couldn't spend a lot of money for media. So in this circumstance, I think you're right, it is, it is razor thin as far as how this works because of the structure that's being required to make the community work. I get short, similar to like our strategy, like how can we maximize this and and create this, you know, structure potentially? Because it, our, our public benefit costs that are way in excess of what revenues, we're going to drive out of it. Like when you look at like all the land that's available here, sinking thirty acres off the table for a park from day one, ten acres for a civic site for day one, forty acres of two sixty is a lot of dirt. It's not like we don't have any other green spaces in the community. We have a pretty substantial dog park and we have pocket parks throughout. So typically, when you go through a zoning process, you're required to do some substantial green space contribution, preservation of land for the benefit of your residents. This is way in excess of that. And that actually, we're still paying them. And so we have these huge costs plus huge infrastructure costs. And so I guess if, if there were ever a hit but four test in my career, I think this is it because of the really excessive costs.
I just want to offer, I think that in similar projects that have been placed or were contemplated by there's hesitation about a hundred percent pledge from elected leaders, appointed leaders. And so it's good to hear from your perspective that, you know, the numbers need to work that way because that's what makes the project go. I would just share that observation that, you know, those town leaders have expressed hesitation at not having some percentage split.
I think, and the most efficient decision here, I know in the development world, there's a lot of red herring opportunities. People make this a negotiation process, give a little and then then negotiate back and forth. And I think what's unique about this, I hope you can receive this, our authentic intent to listen to the community quest was the community made it from our perspective, substantial request or wanted to be good to be partners. We said, yes. We said, yes, but as soon as we got that request, we kind of like, we don't know how to do this. It's a, it's a big ask and we're gonna have some extraordinary costs and we're gonna have to figure this out between us. It's actually where we're at today. And so I've been in that conversation a lot about increment splits, like let's share the pie. But it's still, in this case, very much tilted towards the town's request of us through the, um, true infrastructure improvements and significant land contribution. So we didn't start really with, you know, you know, say, oh, we'll, we'll do the park, we'll run through the civic site. Uh, we did it all in the beginning and that's kind of what's brought us to this.
I think those are, those are all, uh, helpful observations to share. It, the, the only, uh, counters to that view, so civic use and park space, the, to the effect of it being owned by the community, then it's not, you're, you're carving out the tax basis, no longer taxable. Um, and so I would like to know, you know, have, have some estimation of what the town will be giving up as far as future revenues that are being collected today. And, uh, but you're right, it, there, there's a lot of factors and levers that have to be able to make, make things go. Uh, last question, I'll, I'll stop, but, um, give us a sense of what your timeline is, and as you're, as you mentioned, you want to start construction on the infrastructure in summer of twenty-four. Backing that all up, you know, our process, giving it back to the planning commission, to the town council, and then it comes back to this body, which will, you know, likely there will be new faces. What have you plotted out as far as a timeframe for that process to go from RDC to RDC?
Our planning calendar shows that process, uh, getting all the way through that process in March. All right, so, you know, we're here at the end of December, that's about a three month process. Uh, that's part of why, you know, this is a declaratory step to kind of get the process started, it's probably the final step. Uh, so you plan on three-ish months of meeting cycle through, uh, the allocation setup and the bond issuance. And then that's gonna jive with, with your plans to start the process. And, and I can assure you, like the, if, if this were, uh, approved as, as requested, I've never seen approval, the monetization of the bonds happen that fast. And so we're still gonna have to, you got a little time following the process? Yeah, absolutely. We're gonna, we're gonna privately fund the infrastructure to get started and try to hit that summer note of, of schools out. But I certainly can't take that risk without knowing that there's certainly a bunch of them.
There's certainly, thank you for that.
And then the, the term that you're looking for is twenty-five years, correct?
Yep.
Um, I know that this is not that step, but I would like to see a development agreement as, um, the, the final step. I mean, even if I'm not serving on this RDC, um, that, that is something I'd like to see.
Also be able to provide, um, just some more clarity around the single family, multifamily breakdown. We've done, um, I service this school board and representatives commission. We have done a, did a refresh earlier this spring, writing about with enrollment projections. This project has a significant impact on the schools, such that in a short number of years, we'd be looking at additional buildings to serve the student population. Um, so I'd like to make sure that this body understands, um, that the numbers you have presented. I have a stat from, a letter from September, a letter from October, that that actually matches our projections so that we can get a full impact. That's a lot of that.
It was not requested, uh, during the process, but we did our own tax increment, um, study, uh, just, just to understand, assuming we could ask, um, as far as like what's, what's the total generation of, of taxes above the base school need? And we were, the new taxing, um, generator was well in excess in total for the community. So, you know, it's, it's our own modeling, but we could share that as well.
Absolutely. Economic development area includes all of the residential. But the allocation areas are separate to the project, so why not have an EDA that's just the allocation areas? Why have it to be tired?
Please answer that question, but I'll speculate, which I shouldn't do. Um, I think having a larger EDA allows, uh, gives some power for spending the money because you'll have areas, parts of the structure that are serviced, areas that are not in the allocation area but are in EDA. So.
But couldn't it still technically do the end, end of benefiting?
The allocation areas are, I think what's critical. I think that's, that's a fair question.
So the two personies can be spent in the EDA. They must be spent in the EDA, but the revenues that are generated come from the allocation. Some stuff that may occur outside, that gives the commission flexibility to allow investment outside of those, just the two allocation.
We had a similar project in that it had a mixture of single family townhome and multifamily. We did create the same broader EDA so that the, the funds would be served that district. But there was no, never an intention to the, allow to provide additional increment.
No intention for the parks area to be dedicated to the town or will it remain part of the development?
The commitment was that, um, the Johnson family donated to the town. That's part of our PUD agreement, so it would be Parks Department. And we would be building the infrastructure, uh, as far as the trails and the parking area associated with it. But it would be town.
Then in your October letter, uh, you had a value for the civic area land. Oh, that's true. You had value for the civic area land, how was that value?
Nationally market value for, hey, um, the multifamily ground, senior ground, civic ground, it says our per acre value, uh, for each of those sites, we would consider that similar as far as the use site. Um, but also we're adding in the infrastructure improvements. And so, um, and you can see off of, of the bottom of the screen here, um, so the, the main entry for, um, the civic use site as we need to be, would, would be off of the main entry to the development. And so there's a substantial amount of infrastructure that gets built to the benefit, the sheer benefit of the civic use site and rest of the development. So, um, if we were gonna do a commercial use of that corner, uh, or another, you know, say the senior expanded down that side, it's a bigger project. Uh, we would divide the, the, um, all the development costs for roads, uh, mass creating stormwater infrastructure, uh, utility laterals, um, among all the different projects that are going to develop. It's a, all that infrastructure is, is built. It, um, and that's part of our, the land contribution to the town that's already included. And so there's a tap to the sewer main, a tap to the water main, an outlet for the stormwater, all built into that land contribution in the project.
So, short of what the Johnsons do, you are here because of, uh, the request from the town, right? As far as asking for the tip, i- am I, am I correct in saying that? Because if you could develop the whole land, would you be, would you be sitting, would you be in front of us right now asking for a tip? If you, if you had no prerequisites or green area for the town or whatever you say?
Yeah. Likely not. I, I think the, the, uh, question mark though would be maybe around the roundabouts. Uh, cause I can almost say there, you could, we're trying to align tip increment with projects. I can probably make an argument, the numbers aren't the exact, but the senior site and tip increment generated from that are probably pretty similar to the value of the civic site. The multifamily tip increment generated from that are, are similar to the value for the roundabouts. So there, in our view, there was kind of a double ask here. Um, and in the world of planning zoning, whenever you seek approval to do a PUD, um, there, there's a negotiation. You know, hey, if you, if you want zoning or, uh, what can be perceived as a density bonus, uh, we want to extract something out of you, uh, we want you to build roundabouts. What's unique about this project is, uh, with the underlying zoning, we could have gotten pretty close to the density that was ultimately approved. You could, you could do doubles. I don't think anybody would want four hundred doubles, you know, so eight hundred, not a great project, but it's possible. That, that underlying zoning would have supported that. And so that creates this unique opportunity where, um, because of the PUD process, it allowed this, this discussion to go on about how to improve the overall development and roundabouts included. Had we just filed, it wouldn't have been us to do this sort of development, but a typical suburban community with a single prototype block type, um, we could not have been compelled by the town to install roundabouts. We'd have been allowed by right to build, just tap in, basically tap into Marysville Road as constructed. So it creates this opportunity for, for this discussion to happen. Um, so to, to be clear, we might still have made the request specific to the roundabouts, but if we then asked to do the civic site, we probably would have had to.
Um, that civic site, sorry, I'm coming, coming back to something that Amanda had on earlier. Um, so you mentioned that it would be essentially project ready with infrastructure. Does that include proper, like, land base, like pad ready or?
So, you need to do x grading and correction for the entirety of the site, the overall site. In part of that, uh, we call this balancing, um, import or export of dirt is massively expensive. And so when we plan all the stormwater infrastructure, we're trying to balance the overall site. So when we cut ponds, we're always trying, you're at low spots and fill, you don't just throw dirt on top of dirt. You strip topsoil, you bring in, uh, so, yes, to answer your question, yes, we need to balance the entire site. Um, so it is a mutual benefit. We need to, you're getting the benefit of the stormwater, but also we're getting the benefit of using that spoils from the ponds to provide a level pad impacted and ready to use.
Thank you.
If we move this, uh, resolution forward at a hundred percent and it gets to the town council or whoever, um, and it, it's determined that it has to be ninety, ten, I mean, how does that affect you?
Be a pretty serious consequence.
Because you're saying that you're gonna have to finance, um, infrastructure in advance of, uh, the final word on, uh, the, the getting the tip.
Yes, sir, clarified. I will have to start infrastructure in advance of having the proceeds.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant.
But we will have, we would not, we just will not start the project until we have a final determination on the end. One more minor clarification, the declaratory resolution is about establishing area, it's not about pledging any increment. So, uh, the, the request that's attached, uh, contemplates that. But the declaratory resolution is not pledging the increment that the.
I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily change the question.
No, I agree, if you go through the process and you're, you're not at a hundred percent there.
And, and the, the current town council has said that they were not really in time wanting to look at ninety, ten, unless it was ninety. Um, so, I mean, I have no idea what's gonna happen in twenty twenty-four with the town council. I, I just think that it's difficult, um, to move this forward without knowing those answers to those questions. For me personally, doesn't mean that the, that the RDC won't move it forward. I, I just don't, I, I don't know, I, I just, I'm having difficulty.
Uh, I certainly have no right to speak on anyone's behalf. I can tell you the conversations I've had, um, I, I've been abundantly clear. Um, this is the request we will be making to do this, and I have been encouraged by, you know, the, the people who approve the PUD to move this process forward. And so that's why we, we started, because we felt confident that there was support for it. Yeah.
They've mentioned the process for the PUD a couple of times, so I just wanna make sure that everybody understands. This site was rezoned to a planned unit development. As a part of that process, it started at the plant commission, which is one of the boards that will see this request for tip. Uh, then for final approval, it went to town council. And so town council projects, um, and, you know, also the civic side again, when, uh, if the tip reservation is forward.
Where were they, was the town council, uh, did they have transparency on the boundaries of the EDA and the allocation areas when they reviewed that, or this would be fresh?
Well, the exact boundaries, no. They, their role in approval was associated with land use, um, in this project. And so the EDA, the allocation area, you know, is defined in our.
In this, this process.
At that time, did they know that it would be a hundred percent?
Oh, if percentages were spoke, I mean, that's part of our new diligence, right? That's, that's our role. And we each project has incremental steps to move things along. And now, now it's our turn to initiate.
I think that there's, there's a question to do about what is the public benefit if we would provide that ten percent that projects would be foregoing. Looking at the projections, ten percent of that is, what would we do with it? It would sit in account, it would, it would accrue interest. Um, and it, I agree, I, I, I totally agree with what you're saying. I'm just, I'm just working off of, you know, what, what's happened in the past. I know that I, I don't remember, I, I could be wrong. Um, I, I don't remember doing, uh, Sanjay, maybe you could speak to this. Have we done a hundred percent tip? Yeah, okay.
Is part of the planning, um, process with the planning committee, it, is the roundabout, was the roundabout discussion in that or is it included in that? Like, is, because it seems like there's a bit of a disconnect between, I think this is beautiful rendering with roundabouts, I personally like roundabouts. Um, but it seems like there's a bit of a disconnect between the expectation of roundabouts between, is that a planning expectation, is that an administration expectation? I understand when you made the point about how you have a, a roundabout at the north, you have a roundabout at the south. So if you put stoplights in the middle, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I, I get that, that it does make sense to me. So I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out where the disconnect has come in.
You know, the, the municipality has multiple agencies that are responsible, um, for specific things. And they have experts in those roles. So these roundabouts, um, were established based on traffic studies and land use management, moving people. The DPW is responsible for the engineering of that, the, they're gonna be responsible for the size of the roundabout or whatnot. So I'll let Justin speak to the commitment of the roundabout, but, you know, there are, their specialty in the plant commission is to look at kind of a broader picture. And then as we move forward towards implementation, you start to whittle in on the details. And that's when DPW starts to become more involved and understand, um, the necessities of size and specific location. And part of that is going through the flat process too.
Very good. Uh, so can point to the pictures again, but for, for clarity on this one, it was not a request by Merrill staff or, uh, the Knights to have, it was a DPW, um, that, that looked at regional planning, not just our project. It's, we've got, we've. It's, we've got, we've planned this road with all this volume that's gonna come in the future, primarily to the north.
Right.
We have a traffic study now, we think that these roundabouts are necessary for the the safety and function of, it's not just about our traffic. It's about more south in the congestion you create, so that's where, and there's, I think, a periodical argument for public benefit, not just for our residents, it's pretty broad. Uh, so if we had platted a typical suburban production newer neighborhood, uh, you know, five to seven hundred homes, there would not have been the opportunity to town say, you must do X. So this creates this opportunity for them through a PD process to say, you gotta put this in, we say, we can't afford to do that. You know, so early in the process, we rose our hand, put our hand up and said, just know it will be bringing this request for, every council member we met with told the same story, this this will happen because of the request. Just know that when you vote on this, I think that was even the very last twenty seconds of the council approval of the PUD June was, will you be bringing a tip request forward to the parents? That, absolutely, you know, when you vote on this, know that, that uh, the the plan was required.
Are you going to provide a detailed breakdown of uh the seven million dollar ask we have for the first phase? Can you just give us an overview of what types of items are included in that?
Yeah, it's it's primarily related to the roundabouts, uh, so we're still pricing to a part of it, obviously. The PUD didn't have a lot of. Um, I think as you can see, when we did the plat review, the 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 roundabouts were not even in the review of the plan commission review of the project, because it's a public works project happening within the thoroughfare that already exists. So um, we're, we're still pricing that out based on the design we're getting, but that's gonna be your fortified line of, it's just gonna be in the road design, um, and in the roundabout creation. Some of it will be in the perks, so we're to have um parks infrastructure, parking bathrooms that were requested. Um, we'll be upsizing utilities and, um, again, this is a regional thing. Uh, we've been asked to to connect a pretty massive um utility vein up to the north uh, both water and sewer, but it's all verifiable infrastructure that's this dedicated to.
I I wanna say, just for the record, that a a lot of what I'm having difficulty with is that there's not a clear sense from the town council or from the plan commission on when we put, when the RDC puts a a tip out there, whether we do it at fifty fifty, or whether we do it at a hundred percent, or, and what the, and then you know, throw that over across twenty five years, how that affects um, you know, the community at at large. And so you're getting, I'm kind of throwing you on the bus here, and I want to apologize for that, because it's not necessarily your fault. Um, so that's just my two cents I wanted to throw out, I just wanted, I wanted to put the record that it it there. For me personally, I think there's confusion, um, thinking about this, going to the town council, going back to the plant commission, and all the different boards that have made requests to you, um, and kind of, I I kind of feel like the DRDC doesn't necessarily know those. We just talked about, so it's kind of hard, so anyway.
There's a reality there that have these tough conversations as they grow, and so um, they're not, they're not simple answers, and I don't want to be dismissive or flippant.
No, not at all.
The time it needs to take, um, I just, we wanted to be clear that we've said the same thing throughout the whole process of the last eighteen months. Um, shared that with council when they made their approval, and um, I think we're here because uh we believe there's support for it. And so um, I we wouldn't be, I wouldn't have advanced the very significant dollars for the planning effort to seek approval, had I not had a a sense that there was support for the investment of the infrastructure. Uh, I could give you a counter. Um, so I won't name names, but I know what the backup there was, it's a large national holder, I know exactly what they wanted to do, it was a uh, significant senior community, had they just planted it, um, for the underlying zoning rules, they they could have built typical suburban community without the opportunity for the town to say, you must do the the roundabout that's structured, and so what, it would have created a situation where a couple years down the road, the town's saying, we got a traffic issue. Just built this great new road, now we have a traffic issue, I guess we're gonna issue a geo bond or some other mechanism to go fund this. Well, I I think that's this unique, this is the reason the statute exists, it's public-private partnerships. You can, we can have this partnership where we are, we're not even asking, um, it's actually a pretty low bar for for the town. We're not asking you to monetize the bond, honestly, um, I'm pat myself on the back here, but that is kind of a gift to the town that we are actually monetizing the net proceeds from tax increment generated to build public infrastructure, that's not normal. Um, so I think it would be a very fair request versus said, hey, why don't, why don't the town signs will take these dollars? Monetize it, and the town uses it to vote roundabouts. I actually can tell you that because the private sector is doing this work, the roundabout are gonna cost a whole lot less. That doesn't mean they're cheaper, we're building them for the town's specs. But there there's a little, you know, there's a nimble thing here with the private sector building infrastructure. So so had you done this in the future, your, you know, six, eight minute roundabout would probably be double that.
And and just so you know that, those requests are outside our purview, we we don't, we can't do it anymore. Agree with you, I do.
On the pedestrian safety crossing, are you leaning on a tunnel or a ramp with flashing lights?
The hot topic. We think that uh we were hesitant to do exactly what it should be, because we knew that the designing of the roundabout uh influenced that because of the greater load, so um site distance matters and roundabout design and the curvature matters for safety, you can't, you don't have to have them too straight on, a width through them. And so that actually changes the elevation in the day of of that, so um, the way it worked out, the roundabouts get elevated a couple feet higher than, um, invisibly, you wouldn't see, there were hundreds of feet, you wouldn't see the difference. It actually means that to get a tunnel, it would also need to be elevated to kind of create a little ramp, so probably not, it's still doable. We can build it, um, but I I don't think it's designed the town would prefer. There's also the long-term maintenance, it's in public right of way, and if you build a fall, in Indiana, people have water issues, even though we've done hydrology, it's not gonna have standing water. Seasonality is gonna have water issues, you have free fall, free fall issues, it's not gonna last for more than twenty five years before you get rebuilt. So that's where we've just said, here's the information, not counting.
Well, is it, just as far as scale, would this be the largest developer back bond that this group will have approved? You know, I I'm unaware of just the scale of other financial arrangements that have been made.
Farm is a developer back bond.
Yeah, and Applewood Crofting is as well, I mean, what what was the all land for each of those projects?
To say, uh, number one. Um, I, um, if there was one, I would say the closest would be the farm, would be the closest.
Okay, so you're around the same size, and was that, what was, was there a split?
It was ninety five.
Ninety five. So.
On page one.
On page one.
Ten plus two, two is that, then with this two.
So more like ninety, ninety?
Fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty, okay. Well, uh, present, your call.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I feel like we're, uh, we've, uh, we've asked a lot of questions, which have been good, um. And so, yes, we do have a de- a resolution in front of us that has been drafted.
I'll get in here. Well, so the more of the information that I that I personally have taken in this uh discussion, um, I'm gonna move, if we move forward with the resolution.
You're making a motion to?
Making a motion to approve it.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor. Ask this unanimously, um, thanks for entertaining all the questions and um, that concludes our new business. Unless anything has arrived in the last hour, we're good still, okay, so, um, we don't. Yeah, um, we have no other business, so uh, I think we can.
Do adjourn?
Excellent, thank you, we need to adjourn.